But through the leadership of Coach Braun and his coaching staff, and this dedication of his players, the goal was immediate. The team faced some challenges. They started the season with a tie to Stanton, which they then followed up with a 7-0 win. Then they had close losses to Western, our Marlin District play that I'm sure if you asked all of them, they would like to play those games again. And then they lost in the regional championship to a very good Jefferson Forest team. However, the theme of redemption played out for the Black Knights by advancing to the state championship to face Jefferson Forest again. This time, the Black Knights were ready, and with the support from the community, which showed up in huge numbers at the game, thanks to Dr. Gurley and division staff was supporting a Spirit Bus. The Black Knights pulled off a 2-1 overtime win over undefeated Jefferson Forest to win the state 4A championship. They finished the season with a record of 16, 4, and 2. The boys soccer team's journey exemplifies resilience, teamwork, and the unwavering support of our school community. Their accomplishment, their achievement not only brings pride to Charlottesville High School, but also serves as an inspiration to all aspiring athletes and students. At this time, I present to you the 4A state champions, the Charlottesville Boys Soccer Team. Please come forward as I call your name. Number zero, Jacob Leder. Number one, Graham Stevenson. Number two, Sammy Gabardini. Number three, Gilbert Kishindi. Number four, Landon Neal. Number five, Cole Davis. Number six, Mathias Zimmerman. Number seven, Garrett Williams. Number eight, Mulamba Makuna. Number nine, Timson Duolo. Number 10, Amin Zakari. Number 11, Abbas Noor. Number 12, Elias Zell. Number 13, Anthony Medina. Number 14, Omar Castillo Lara. Number 16, Guy Maguma. Number 17, Solomon Ross Milligan. Number 18, Jackson Elmore. Number 19, Cooper Moreland. Number 20, Ethan Salvatiera. Number 21, Dylan Bizoni. Number 22, Leo Manca. Number 23, Jonathan Alomar. Number 24, Reese Williams. Number 25, Zion Tello. Number 26, Wendell Carr. And number 99, Jonathan Ironi. The soccer team was coached by Assistant Coach Ayet Mohammed, Assistant Coach Said Osman, Assistant Coach Andrew Manning, and Assistant Coach Hussein Osman, and head coach, the Central Virginia Coach of the Year, Martine Braun. They know how to do this. They're used to getting pictures taken. Good job, guys. Thank you. Thanks for being here, though. Thanks, Coach. Well, thank you. These achievements marked a year filled with men's school pride for Charlottesville High School, but also served as an inspiration to our entire community. I appreciate the school board for formally recognizing and celebrating the accomplishments of these state champions. By honoring their achievements, we celebrate the values of excellence, perseverance, and teamwork that are integral to our school's commission. Thank you.
I have to jump in here because if we let this season end without saying a great big thank you to the person who has stepped into this role so capably, so ably, with such spirit and such leadership, then shame on us. So let's give a big round of applause to Andy Jones.
Thank you. Thank you on behalf of the school board, all of the student athletes, and Mr. Jones. Thank you again. All right, we're moving on to adoption of our consent agenda. If someone has a motion for that, please.
I move, I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion?
I don't hear any.
Yeah, I don't know.
Are you on? Testing.
I'm gonna.
I'm talking.
I'll try again. Is that better?
A little bit.
All right, so we, there we go. We did have a motion from Dr. or Mr. Morse, and then a second from Ms. Dooley for the adoption of our consent agenda. There were no indications that anybody had questions. So all in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Great, thank you so much. And we are moving on to action items.
All right, first up, we have the appointment of clerk and deputy clerk. I would ask our school board if you would approve the appointment of Leslie Thacker as school board clerk and Julia Green as our deputy clerk for the school board.
So we need a motion and a second, please.
I move that we appoint Leslie Thacker as our school board clerk and Julia Green as our deputy clerk.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Thank you so much.
All right, next, I will ask Ms. Swift if she will come forward. You know, we brought forth our policy updates back during the spring, and this is action this evening.
Yes, so, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. At our last board meeting in May, we presented the 2425 BSBA policy updates for your review. And so tonight, we ask that you take action on these policies.
I move that we approve the policy updates as presented.
Second.
So we had a motion by Ms. Dooley, a second by Ms. Cooper. Any questions, discussion, concerns? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now our items for discussion. Up first, we have Dr. Odie with our student reps for the school board from CHS. Fancy.
Fancy. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley, good, good evening. I am honored tonight to present the names of our 2024-25 candidates for student representatives to the board. Our representatives that have been selected are Harper Ulrich, who is an 11th grade student at the high school, Nulia Obiara, who is a senior. She's here tonight. We'll have her stand. And Anya Hudok, who is a 12th grade senior as well. I don't think the other two... Oh, it's Anya. Anya is here as well. So we have two of our representatives here tonight. Those are our three candidates for student representatives to, representatives to the board. I would love to bring all three of them again next week when we can have all three available to take pictures, if that is, if that is the will of the board. But certainly, if it is the will of the board, we would love to present those names tonight and have you vote to approve them.
Any questions, discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion for action tonight.
Yes, I enthusiastically move to approve those reps.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
All right, any questions, discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll see you in September with all three reps here.
All right, up next, we have Dr. Justin Malone will come forward and give us a CHS update as the new principal.
I am, I'm actually really grateful to be here. I appreciate this. Greetings, by the way. Madam Chair, Dr. Gurley, members of the board. I had, I do know Harper Ulrich, our school board rep, and I got a chance to meet Anya and Nulia this evening. And so I'm proud to be here as they represent us and to celebrate our Charlottesville High School soccer team, state champ tennis team, as well as fierce Atlanta, rather. Just a lot of exciting things at Charlottesville High School. So I am principal, monitoring this of Charlottesville High School. I have updates on several safety features or processes that are impacting some of these features predate my return to CHS, but I was thankful to have the opportunity to either inform or to refine their adoption.
And if you have any questions as Dr. Malone goes along, you can ask those questions instead of waiting to the end.
So I'll be going over our cellphone procedures, including an update on state guidance, exterior door access control, the weapons detectors for events with anticipated attendance of more than 250 participants, the improved visitor management system, B Commons bathroom construction update, and our e-hall pass system. So first, as it relates to our cellphone policy, the expectation is that it's off and away. We expect to be in compliance with state guidelines and look forward to the governor's continued guidance at the state level on what this policy looks like from the states in. We recognize that cellphones and similar personal devices can be disruptive, but we will maintain our work in building and prioritizing relationships with our students and with our families and build off the success that was experienced over the course of last year in redirecting cellphone use and engaging students in meaningful opportunities for redirection. And through our relationships with our students and our relationships with our families, we will continue to enforce an off-and-away expectation throughout the day in all spaces throughout the building. We certainly believe that the less time on phones and the experience that they have with social media takes a step towards improving their mental health, along with our off-and-away expectations and the other tiered services that we provide through CHS and our relationship with our students and our families. We're hopeful that our expectations will be, will be met. We want students to rise to those expectations and that our own consistency and clarity in meeting this expectation will, will be effective and successful.
Yeah, Dr. Malone?
Yes.
So for the, my mic on? For the, for the sake of the public, could you please just again, in a little bit more detail, explain what our current policy or practices are and expectations are, and then how, how we can look to support staff a little bit better in, in following up with that?
Sure. The expectation for, for Charlottesville High School students is that their device is off and away. So that expectation is that the device is off and away as they, when they come into Charlottesville High School, and that exists as they transition through all their spaces, so instructional spaces in the hallways and in the commons areas or cafeteria spots where they would be, where they would be dining. The expectation is that if a staff member engages with a student, asks them to put their phone away, that that expectation is met. We recognize that there have been certainly some difficulties and sometimes in responding to behaviors or levels of defiance around that. Our, our work continues to be in refining our practices, how we build relationship, how we engage students in redirection, how we engage students in the classroom as well for meaningful and engaging instruction during the times that they're in that space to help create greater for the phone to be less of a distraction and less of a, of an issue specifically in instructional spaces. But specifically, the expectation is that when, that phones are off and away and when directed or redirected by a staff member, that, that they're put away.
So my understanding, last year, as far as the practices went, if, if teachers needed help and there was some, some pushback regarding phone management in the classroom that they would call for an administrator to help, is that still how you intend to follow through with that?
Yes. So in conjunction with the administrative team, other partners that might be in support, include our CSAs, that if there is a challenge that exists with a student not being compliant with either putting their phone away on their own person or into a, in the classroom, that we would be in a position to respond and support both that student and that teacher in helping to meet that expectation. And then that, that expectation exists. Uh, and then that, that expectation exists if that, if that becomes a if it grows in contention, or if we feel like that's unsuccessful, then we will, we will continue to work with that student and their family and, and helping to understand the importance of meeting this expectation and, and, and following these, these expectations, and then the consequence could ultimately mean that the, a parent might have to come and, and take that phone and, and leave that phone, uh, at home for an extended period of time.
And then last year, I mean, there were a lot of things going on last year, but I know that there had been talk, I believe, amongst the committee, um, at, at a certain point in time about trying to roll this out to grade cohorts to have a designated um, session or cohort meeting where, where they really did some education and, and, um, communication to the why and helping, helping the students understand the why, didn't know if you had anything like that kind of planned, or, or how are you going to communicate this a little bit differently or better maybe to students this year?
So we're, we've already started the messaging to families via Parent Square and through, uh, through our media platforms. Um, we will continue to refine this work and this expectation with, uh, a staff next week as we meet, uh, during our pre-week time. And then we have already established a school-wide assembly for the first week of school, and then cohort, um, grade-level expectations meetings are already set for the first few weeks of school where we will be both communicating and reinforcing this expectation. It is also going to be, as we are refining what our current schedule is, including what, uh, what we are doing with our black nighttime with a, a focus and an emphasis on, um, social and emotional wellness and connectedness, uh, that we're, we're hoping that the culture that informs these responses is, is steady and, um, both positive and stable, uh, and what I understood from some of the experiences, let's do understand where there had some challenges to be sure, was that there was a uh, a growing responsiveness from students to be, to be beating these expectations and staff feeling, uh, to a certain extent, successful in engaging students positively and effectively and, and students following those, those expectations. So, but we will continue that messaging from, uh, a, as, at a school level during assemblies and cohort, grade-level expectation meetings, and all the way down through our, our classroom expectations, and then certainly within the relationships that we build in, in an interpersonal way.
Hi, Dr. Malone, welcome.
Thank you.
Want to ask, um, some feedback that we received last year from parents and, and families was how do they contact their student when a need arise at home, change of plans, any communication needs that they need to have with their student, and I'm wondering what we have in place to support families that need to communicate with their child while they're in school?
Yeah, certainly. Um, and I have a high school student as well, so I understand the, the, the value that we, that communication and for direct and accessible, um, and certainly believe that with their own personal Chromebook device, for example, that the features that exist within that device, so whether or not that's direct email or through Google Chat, um, that there are, there are ways, they are often up during instructional times, they're accessible to students all during instructional times. Um, so that's, I think that's certainly one mechanism for families and for a mutual reciprocal dialogue between a student and their family. Um, and then certainly, if there is an urgent matter that needs to be communicated, that the, the office staff and the administrators or someone who's in a position, personnel or staff who are in a position to help, will help deliver those messaging as well. I think there's, uh, I'm certain that we, we will be able to coordinate effective communication, um, with, without the, the need for cellphones to be a feature of certainly their instructional practice, but a part of their instructional day.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Malone.
Hi.
Um, my comment is to encourage you and your team to also think about, as you're thinking through kind of the discipline response matrix, to also think about if there's opportunities to celebrate the student body successfully embracing this new norm. Um, and if there's ways that we can help support in that regard, you are really miked up now.
That's two mics?
Yes.
You're doing great.
Congratulations. Um, yeah, so just thinking about the positive reinforcement as well, not just a punitive response to students who are having trouble, um. This is a big change, uh, for all of us, and so, you know, in supporting, but then also celebrating students that we know can be successful in making this change.
I could say, uh, to that point, I appreciate that, and I do think that that exists not only around the acknowledgement and the affirmation around sort of this device conversation, um, but in, in so many other ways of, of students, because the, there's, there's obviously something very special about Charlottesville High School and, and, um, the remarkability of our students, they're often doing really amazing things, a lot, and so being in a position, um, our team is focusing on both through our positive school culture work, but through our admin and leadership team of developing multiple opportunities of positive affirmation and positions of, of seeing and acknowledging both from staff to students, but through our, our, our student mentors with each other as well, so I, I, I affirm and concur with that, thank you. All right, thank you. So the next feature that is an upgrade to current systems at Charlottesville High School of the exterior door access control. Uh, currently, our staff, uh, in Charlottesville City School staff use a fob for fob entry, that's pretty, I think it's prevalent on almost every exterior door at Charlottesville High School, and that also exists at other Charlottesville elementary schools. The change specifically that this speaks to is there is now going to be, uh, a two-way feature, so staff who are with a group of students that are going to be transitioning from an interior instructional space to an exterior space for an instructional purpose, they will use the fob, they will activate the fob, uh, on their regress, and then as they go out with the group, once their group is left, they, there is another access control panel that they will then use the fob to uh, activate that this is, the door is now clear, and that the group that has left is authorized to have leave, and then the, the door is then shut, and it is, it is, uh, a mechanism to affirm that whoever exited that door had permissions to do so, as evidenced by their fob use. In the event that someone leaves, exits a door with either without permission or without their fob, that door will activate, uh, an alarm, um. It'll, uh, a localized alarm will sound, and an alert will then go to the administrative team and to our CSAs, it'll send a notification via email and via text that a door, someone exited a door, um, possibly without permission, or, and that alerts us to then go and to respond to that situation. The weapons detectors for public ticketed events, the CHA open gate detectors will be used at public ticketed events, uh, with expected participation of two hundred and fifty participants or more. Uh, largely, we're thinking these are going to be our outdoor athletic events. Um, in addition to having clear bags for ticketed events that we will be going, we have had some training already about their use uh, and their, uh, capacity, and we will, that, that training included some division staff, Charlottesville High School administrators, uh, our CSAs, um, and we will continue that training with our staff and the athletic department to be sure, and I believe that signage and other communication about its use and its functions is, is forthcoming. Pat, can I get three mics? I don't know if we're supposed to joke them. The improved visitor management system, this is also through the Securely package, it's, uh, adopted at some of, uh, at least, um, I think at least one other elementary school was using something similar. The visitor management systems have been in place in city schools, and essentially, I think this upgrade is that it's a, uh, a, a license or the identification is scanned, and it, it goes through a background check, um, and alerts if something comes up, otherwise, I think it remains, um, it, it permits a visitor to be, proceed as a visitor or a volunteer as an approved guest.
And we already were doing this, it just brings it under the product we, we're already using, which is Securely.
Okay, moving on to the restroom renovations that are, uh, underway in B Commons, they are so very near completion, we expect that this is completed by next week, um, I think they are, uh, in the final phase, I think, of getting the floors sealed and cleaned and getting the doors installed, but ultimately, this is going to be an all-gender, single-stall toilet space, I think we have over a dozen or so, it's gonna in, encourage better privacy, uh, accountability, um. The project was begun back in the spring, and I think we're, again, we're close to, uh, to having it at, at completion, um, and it'll be essentially stalls around, individualized stalls around the perimeter of that space, and then a common sink area for handwashing that centers in the middle of that area in B Commons. So the e-hall pass system is also a, through the Securely suite, uh, and this is something that the Charlottesville High School staff did some initial conversations and some training on last year, we had some staff that were curious about this option and went and visited some schools and participated in some dialogue about this system. And essentially, it's a digital, uh, pass system where a student can generate a pass from their device that is then alerted to the teacher at their device, that teacher can acknowledge that that student, uh, has asked for a pass and then approve it, and then what it does is it, it, um, that student then has a dedicated amount of time, uh, and to go to a dedicated space that is determined on that pass. This system, because it is, uh, a digital platform that teachers will have a dashboard, we're going to be able to be accountable for our own actions and staff as, as facilitators of our instructional spaces. It's going to be super important that our work include bell-to-bell instruction and that we preserve those first ten minutes of transition to an instructional time, and that last ten minutes of that transition of the instructional time are preserved, uh, for quality instructions, so we are not permitting students, unless there's an emergency, to transition in the first ten or the last ten minutes of a, of a period. This system helps us to be in, in, in better support of, of a structured response to that. Um, it's fairly accessible, and having used it both as a, uh, on the student side and on the, on the staff side, we find that it's going to be, it's an efficient use, it works really well with our devices. Um, we're able to limit the number of students in a designated area that receive a pass, we're able to set time limits, um, and then we're able to run information over a period of time to see what our trends were about our pass usage and to our, either the frequency that a, that a teacher might be using passes, or maybe using them at a time that they shouldn't, or a student who is, uh, in overuse of, of the passes. So this is going to put us in a, in a position of being, um, accountable and structured around our actions and expectations as it relates to student movement through the hall, and I think this is going to be a significant opportunity for us, um, to improve on multiple students being in spaces at times when they shouldn't be. We will have, I think it's important, we've, the, um, leadership, administrative team has already done some training on this with Securely, uh, we've had at least two training sessions with their staff. Our staff will be trained in this next week during pre-week, and that'll include a, an overview of its use from the Securely representatives, and then we will, as a staff, workshop and simulate what it's like to use this pass, we will have staff be in a position as teachers as well as students and sort of role-play, uh, role-play this system to keep working and refining our systems and processes about how this will work. We're real encouraged about, about its use and implementation.
Question, sir?
Sure.
So, um, I think I heard you say it has the capability of limiting the number of students, say, on a hallway that are out, so how does that work? Like, all teachers on that, say, we're on C hallway?
Yes.
All teachers can see how many passes in that hallway have been released?
Yes, so there is a dashboard that the teacher could keep up on a device that they are, they have in their space, and if you were going, if you were just toggling through tabs, so if you're doing your instructional work, you could easily toggle back to a dashboard that will indicate the number of students that currently have passes that are out there, and that can alert that person that you, we, or the teacher, rather, that we cannot approve a pass at this point. Um, and, but it'll show a, a, a real number relative to a location at a certain time, uh, and give that feedback on a dashboard, so if we're, that, that same dashboard would exist for any of our staff that are on duty in these, in, in spaces that are close to where these transitions might take place, they could also have a dashboard that indicates the number of students that, that are there or that should be there, as well as the specific student that has a pass and from what location they are coming from.
Uh, one of the things that, that Ms. Waters shared with me when I sat with her back in the spring when she shared the, um, the little video, is that if Emily and I are not getting along, and, you know, my, um, my counselor knows that we're not, we're not getting along, that we can be tagged to not be out in the spaces at the same time. Um, so you can, you can limit student inaction in that manner as well.
So, let's say Lisa needs to go to the restroom, and I, I generate my pass. Um, Dr. Malone has approved it, and I'm out, so what happens if I'm out, you know, for thirty minutes?
It's far too long for you to be out.
Absolutely.
Let me say that off the bat, um.
My stomach was upset, but I'm, I'm now wandering the halls, so what, what happens then?
So there's multiple things that are happening, one, I, I, well before that thirty-minute marker, we would want to be alerted that that Lisa has been in the hall, she had a restroom, the approved time was this time, and right now, um, she's not returned, and we need someone to help locate where she would be, and that, that can come through our own internal communications, so we would ask the teacher, if the student is gone for that inordinate amount of time without knowledge and without understanding as to the purpose, then they, they would need to have alerted us much sooner that we would need to then go and make sure that we are accountable for your location. Um, but I don't, I, I want to make sure that, and, and so in that moment, what can also happen is our CSAs do have a device, like, uh, I think it's like, uh, an iPad mini, that can also have this dashboard that exists out there, and so they can also be able to check passes in real time as we're moving through the halls and monitoring those spaces, both as an admin team or as CSAs or staff that are on duty, then we will be monitoring in real time, hey, I saw Lisa at one point, now she's in a different location, and then we would, we would then act as if, as if you had a paper pass or you know, in, in any pass system, I guess.
Great, that was my next question, thank you, so the people in the hallway will also have some way to monitor and kind of see what's going on?
What we would be able to have, at a minimum, would be the devices that the CSAs use, that's my understanding of their functionality. Uh, I don't know yet is, is if our devices, our cellphones right now can show those dashboards, but we would be able to, we have our devices that come up in real time, so, and staff that are on duty al- also have their devices, so those dashboards would be accessible, uh, and visible, so they would be able to check in real time who should be wearing for what reason.
So do we have enough iPads or iPad minis that all of, like, the CSAs and admin staff would have one?
It's a great question, I do believe that the CSAs all have a dedicated one. Uh, we all have our other devices that we have, I'm going to pivot to Ms. Powell, maybe you have the question also was about admin devices.
I, I can speak to that, it's, the system's web-based, so the iPad minis are there for the CSAs because their role is portable and in the hallway, and then all teachers and all staff have your instructional workstation, which is your board and your Chrome box, and then they have a professional workstation, which was, would be a recommended spot for these passes, and so it's a web-based system, so anybody with web access will have access to the interface, but specifically for the CSAs because of the portability issue, they have the minis, and I believe they're putting them in like a sling, a sling pouch for portability.
And, and security, so that they're safe.
It feels like we're asking teachers to do one more thing, which I know-
It feels like we're asking teachers to do one more thing, which I know we are. But wonder if, like, are there automatic alerts? Or is a teacher gonna have to keep refresh, refresh, refresh? Or, oh my gosh, I have three students out. Let me chat, like. I just don't know, like, if you have any reference point to that versus, like, a more manual mining of information versus an alert that come, like, somebody's indicator turns red, you've been gone greater than fifteen minutes versus being so focused on instruction, thirty minutes later, you're like, oh, gosh, did Lisa come back? I think she did.
Sure.
Just wanna be mindful of what, like, another administrative task, I think, that we're asking teachers to to help manage to.
I I think that I'm I'm thankful that you're thinking about it from that perspective as well. Um, this is initially staff-driven um transition in consideration. The way I have been thinking about this particular system is it an improvement over what we currently have. And so those same expectations and that same accountability for generating a pass or waiting on a student uh currently exists. So I think in that way, I think that that's fairly linear. I think that in the instructional space, I totally think there's gonna be some adjusting to how this works. The dashboard and the past themselves are big buttons, red, green, five-minute timer, zero. It has an alert that looks at it. So if I'm, if I'm doing my lab here, if I'm looking at my board and I do a pivot, I I have a good visual cue that just gives me an indicator um that I can act and take action. So I I wonder if in some ways it, and we do have some refining to do. We've not used it. Um, and this is why I sort of love the idea of us, teachers who know students really well and know their own work systems and processes really well, of workshopping and simulating the what-ifs so that we can keep working on what that refinement looks like. But the the way I have perceived it and through the training and the visual and the way the dashboard lays out, one, I think it it certainly is gonna help improve our own accountability, which I think is significant. But I do wonder if it's actually gonna really improve our um accessibility of just this pretty straightforward, very, very common practice of, I need to go to the restroom. Where do I go? How long do I go for? It sort of gives some structure and process to that. And I and maybe in a more linear way.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. Well, thank you. Any other questions? Well, appreciate it. We will continue to be communicating about these, this work and these expectations um along with so many other things that we're excited about at Charlottesville High School. So I I appreciate you all uh taking the time to listen to me about this. Thank you.
Uh, next, we have Rachel Raznick, who will give us an update on MTSS.
Hi. Good evening, Dr. Gurley, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, tonight, I'm gonna share with you an update on the multi-tiered system of supports. Um, I am going to be brief, but I could talk on this for decades. Um, so our multi-tiered system of supports is woven throughout our strategic plan framework. Um, it's within goals and strategies for increasing academic achievement, providing a culture of safety, wellness, and belonging, supporting our staff, and fiscal responsibility. It encompasses it all. Um, and while I'm here sharing this information with you, I want to acknowledge that the hard work that happens on a daily basis in Charlottesville City Public Schools to implement, evaluate, and refine our processes um is the collective effort. Um, we have domain coordinators, we have Patrick Farrell, Jody Murphy, Stacy Reedall, Melissa Mitchum, Bianca Johnson. They're working to, um, their work is essential to our framework to be aligned and integrated. Our principals and assistant principals invest in this work with their time and their leadership at their schools. And then our domain chairs, our problem-solving teams, our teachers, interventionists, everybody is working together to refine and align. That's the big thing really with our MTSS framework, um, all with the goal of benefiting students. So I'm gonna touch base a little bit on the overarching principles of the multi-tiered system of supports. Um, so they're not separate, um, but I'm gonna try to present them a little bit separately. So the first one is screening. So we implement universal screening to identify whether students are at risk for not meeting their grade level benchmarks. Um, and that's not just for academics. We use universal screening measures for non-academic areas as well. And we know that in addition to assessments that are aligned with our assessment calendar, we, our early warning system that combines attendance, behavior, and fourth completion is essential for us to know whether students are on track to graduate. Then we have our multi-level prevention system. And this is our continuum of instruction and intervention across the domains. So reading, math, um, our positive school culture, attendance, student family engagement, and mental health domains. The MTSS teams ensure that what we're providing to students is evidence-based, culturally and linguistically responsive, and is matched with our students and our students' needs. Um, and we provide a resource guide to our staff um where they can get that information and make decisions based on um that, based on evidence-based practices. So then we have progress monitoring. So progress monitoring is used to evaluate the effectiveness of what we do. So that's the effectiveness of our core instruction. Um, we gather data at the student level, the grade level, the school level, and division-wide um in order to make decisions um at all of those levels as well. Um, at the division level, progress monitoring um is our strategic plan dashboard, right? That's how are we doing? Are we doing the things we said we're gonna do and are they working for our students? So then, one of the pieces that ties all of those things together is our use of data to make decisions about instruction and intensification. So our progress monitoring and our universal screening data is combined come to be able to make those good decisions for students. Um, some examples of this, so if a student is in a reading intervention um and their progress monitoring data shows that they are approaching their goal, um, they're reading goal, um, then we know that we need, need to provide that. As their universal screening data increases and they're nearing grade level benchmarks, they, we want them to exit from that intervention. Um, another example would be like at a grade level, our PLCs are using unit assessments, map data, progress monitoring data, make sure that the classroom instruction is matched with the student needs. Um, our instructional coaches are essential for that work in PLCs. But then a domain team, so our positive school culture team might look at our office and see that um there's an increase in a certain type of student behavior. So how are we gonna respond to that with our school-wide lessons? Are we gonna have um a cohort meeting if it's just one grade level? Um, are we gonna increase our supervision during transitions? So I, what Dr. Malone was talking about, even with the E hall pass system, that provides us data to be able to respond to our students and adjust um accordingly. And then at the division level, um, we use data to effectively allocate resources based on the needs at schools. Um, and we'll hear a little bit more about that um when we get to attendance. So um the straight numbers, so by the numbers um for our multi-tiered system of support, right now, all of our benefit are tier-one core instruction across those domains. Um, but then at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, um, three hun- about thirty-five hundred total intervention plans were implemented in Charlottesville City Schools. Um, those, they use sixty-eight different evidence-based strategies. Um, we had a hundred and sixty people attach those interventions, doing that progress monitoring and support. Um, and what's great about how we collect that data is we can even see, like, down to the domain, how many interventions were provided. Um, and then we, as a division-level team, have used that data to make some decisions um to support our schools more effectively. So I wanted to bring a spotlight to attendance. Um, we are tackling attendance using this multi-tiered system of supports framework. Um, we know that good school attendance requires um some things for all students and families. And then as students need more intensive support, we wanna layer those on top. Um, so one of the first things that um we set ourselves the task of doing was ensuring that our attendance data is accurate. Um, so we are using um an enhanced dashboard to be able to quickly identify students who are at risk for being chronically absent. Um, the division-level team this year, led by Patrick Farrell, has put together a handbook to ensure data accuracy, but also help teams know when to intervene um and how to verify whether a student is at risk for chronic absenteeism. Um, it includes protocols that will align our practices across our schools to make it bring clarity to when it's appropriate to access court services, when we wanna refer to outside agencies for additional supports. Um, and that, we wanna be addressing the root cause for the individual student or the family. And so if the root cause is part of how the student and family feel um engaged with the school, um, that's gonna be a different type of intervention and support um than if it's an individual student who needs mental health support or a family that needs resource support um in order to um get their student um to school on time every day. Um, and then we also identified through our end-of-year data that we had some schools, we used a combination of behavioral and mental health intervention data and attendance data to identify that we had three schools that required additional boots-on-the-ground, hands-on support for families and students. Um, we identified those schools to be Summit, Jackson Bia, and CHS. And so those schools are gonna get additional social work support this school year um so that they can continue to provide um the high-quality mental health intervention and provide additional interventions to students and families with the goal of um getting kids to school on time every day. This visual is from Attendance Works, which is our hub for accessing evidence-based interventions for attendance. Um, but I really appreciate how this highlights that our multi-tiered framework leads to the positive conditions that encourage students to come to school. And so we can't, this isn't a student and family engagement domain team meeting and talking about attendance. This is literacy and math, ensuring that there is high-quality engaging instruction. Um, it's our events that happen um during the day and after school. It's what's available and um to build their mental wellness. Then it's that positive school culture that's established through safety um and belonging um each and every day. So then this, so this year, you've heard kind of a little bit about what we did at our division leadership team this year. We really focused on developing practices and systems that were equitable and common across our schools. Each of our domains has an implementation guide um that lays out month by month what those domain teams should be focusing on. Um, and we've laid out the professional learning that supports all staff, um, people who are on domain teams and then individual interventionists um for MTSS throughout the year. So then next year, our division team is shifting to a focus on fidelity. So what, we've said what we're doing, and next year, are we doing it and is it working? Um, so one of the first tasks um that our attendance teams, school-based attendance teams were given was to look at what practices are gonna be provided for all families, what makes your school a welcoming place. Um, and those teams are gonna bring that information to the leadership team and we're gonna look at um their absenteeism data and share some knowledge and best practices among each other. Any questions?
I have a quick question. Um, thanks for this presentation. Um, I have one question that I um, I think I may have asked or brought up last year about um substance abuse and where are we with having someone to kind of, especially with uh middle school and high school, to kind of tackle um the substance abuse issues that our kids are struggling with.
So um, we'll be implementing a program at Walker um that's focused on substance abuse prevention. Um, we got a grant um and that involves Jessica Brantley with Health and PE, Jody Murphy with Mental Wellness. Um, and so at Walker, we're really focusing on prevention. And then we're working with Region Ten to expand and refine what was available last year um and evaluate whether that's meeting the needs of our students, what else we need to do um both to bring awareness to, awareness to and prevention as well as respond to students that we know have um personal health needs. So that's the primary.
Will that be available when schools start or is it later down the road?
Right now, we have um, we have a provider who's trained in one method of addressing substance abuse. And we're working with Region Ten to um increase the different strategies um that we have access to, to address it.
I feel like we've heard that before. And I just want to say and make it clear, that is a service our students need. And if Region Ten is not the answer, we, we need to employ services elsewhere. Um, we've been having this conversation about substance abuse. We know that it is an issue. And I really look for a substantial effort to be made in that space to see progress and work done. And again, if Region Ten isn't the answer, then let's look elsewhere.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, did you, did you give us a timeframe? Did you, will it, will it be available when school starts?
Um, what is currently available is what will be available at CHS when school starts.
And then another question, um, have we identified maybe students that struggled or have historically struggled with attendance over the last one, two, three years? And are we proactively summertime gearing up, reaching out to those families, reaching out to those students? What does that proactive approach look like if there is one?
Yeah, so we, we were able to, we can identify all of the students who were chronically absent in previous years. Um, that information is available to schools, to our school mental health professionals, um, and our school social workers return next week and will be hitting the ground running. Um, we hope through this um differentiated staffing model for social work that it also um, looking to next summer, um, it really intensely focuses on, okay, keeping that continuity going. Um, because our, our social work staff are um ten months. So we need to use all the resources we have and look at how they can be used over the summer, um, whether it's through um, like, using some of the all-in funds for hourly um and working with community providers um and partners. Um, we've had some meetings with community partners about how they contribute to this work as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Raznick, I think a- along the lines of some of my board members, fellow board members here. I mean, I think we, we all do agree that last year, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about what other types of supports we could have for substance abuse and and thought we were heading, you know, a certain way with an MOU and that that didn't work out or the the services weren't what we thought. And I think we are just all very supportive, I want you to know. And I know Dr. Gurley knows this and and is aligned with this, but I think we really wanna be proactive in in being able to cement some type of program and supports for our students like yesterday. So whatever you need, please let us know. Thank you.
And and Dr. Gurley is
And, and Dr. Gurley has charged us with looking at what a job description would look like. What we need, what we need for our students. Um, and so I really appreciate your support. Um, in thinking differently about how we provide substance abuse counseling and support to our students.
So as we are, um, as we are evaluating our current model, um, when we get into the budget season, um. Before we just jump all in, we want to make sure that we've evaluated all the resources, starting from Walker on up. And then really think strategically about um, not just, you know, we've talked about what a position would look like. But like how this person um who, you know, is credentialed in substance abuse, but also in some other things. Um, because hopefully this person can, you know, fix our problems and this is not all that they will do all day. Um, so we are, we are, I want you to know that we are actively doing this work. And you'll hear more about this as we get into the budget season.
I um, I appreciate that. I just want to be mindful that a lot of our kids struggle with substance abuse. And I don't want them to right turn back to school, we knowing that this is an issue. Um, and then they're kicked out of school um for maybe coming with marijuana or getting caught. A lot of our young kids are vaping now or getting caught with the vape. And so if we can kind of be proactive in supporting that, um, so that we can kind of get in front of it before school starts. And even like maybe start some type of campaign online and talk about like, you know, vaping and the things of the outcomes from vaping. Um, so that we can kind of get in front of it before it comes into our schools.
Absolutely. I, I think we all are at the same place and I think that's why we have to um just press our Region 10 partners. And, and we get what staffing looks like. I mean, we're experiencing the same things, so I think we really need them to lean into this moment with us. Um, so that we can be proactive with our um students and then continue to build our model. Um, one that we will be able to sustain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, next we have our non-resident enrollment, um, Ms. Kim Powell.
Good evening, Dr. Gurley, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, um, the, the goal of this presentation is just really to revisit our uh non-resident tuition rates. And to be clear, there's no changes proposed for this year. That ship is sail. But we want to look ahead to next year and get ahead of the next budget. So. I know we have a lot of uh new, new faces. We haven't.
Pat, are both of these supposed to be on?
One of them is supposed to be off.
I think Kim put the other one.
Test check, one, two.
All right, thanks. All right, here we go again. I'm not touching anything. So just to give, make sure everyone has some background about the non-resident program. It started in the early 2000 era in response to declining city schools enrollment. Um, the policy J E C C actually um. Shows that it uh was first approved in 2004. But when I was digging through the records of my predecessors, I found the first uh enrollment numbers dated back to 2000, 2001 school year. That's the first record I could find of it. I came here in 2014 and it was well established before I came.
Uh, in that first year or the earliest year I can find data, we had eighty-three elementary non-resident students, twenty-six middle. Seventy CHS for a total of a hundred and seventy-nine students. So that's how far back it goes. And the policy that governs the program, the key components are that the prospective student needs to meet in full the admission standards. Um, so you know, on track with their SOLs and things like that. And then there needs to be sufficient room to accommodate the student in the grade of the school requested without additional material costs to the division. That's very important. So. Thanks. So what are the, the pros and the challenges of the program? There are a lot of pros. It provides an important employment incentive for CCS and city staff, and you're going to see some numbers behind this in just a minute. Um, staff students are subject to the same admission criteria as other non-resident students, but the tuition is waived. And um, this of course provides sort of that convenience of bring your child to work with you sort of thing. Um, especially since so many of our staff come from outside the city into the city. It's honestly also, I think, related to why some of the surrounding localities pay tuition to come. Because when families are coming into work, it, it can be more convenient to have their child here as well. But it's also because we have a product that's worth paying for, for sure. Um, it does help us smooth out enrollment fluctuations, which is, this can be helpful, especially when you're managing enrollment across six elementary schools. In a ten-square-mile radius, it can help you kind of fill some gaps as they come up in the different uh residency zones. On the secondary level, um, the larger student body helps support our wide array of elective programs in areas such as the fine arts and athletics. If you look at the athletic teams, the, like, some of the, the breadth we offer with field hea- field hockey and lacrosse. And our total enrollment, a lot of schools with our total enrollment number don't necessarily fill out all those teams. It's, it's we, I always say we play big for a school division our size and I, I'm talking about orchestra. I'm talking about the breadth of the um athletic options and that's all really, really great, I think. Um, and it does help maintain our overall enrollment and our state revenues. Enrollment is the most heavily weighted component of the LCI calculation. We have a lot of factors working against our LCI. It keeps going up. Cause you know, we're always being compared relative to every other locality in the state. When it comes to, you know, state ADM, true value of property, adjusted gross income of the residents, the population and the taxable sales. The single biggest driver of the LCI is, is your ADM, your enrollment. Okay, so those are the, the, the benefits of the program. The challenges are that enrollment and space avail- availability, they, it fluctuates, it changes over time. And I will tell you that once a family is accepted as a non-resident student, they do have to apply, reapply every year. There's no automatic renewal. That includes employees' children. But at the same time, once a family is with you, you know, you're kind of hopefully in it with them for the long haul, right? But also the students' needs can change over time and that's sometimes something we have to take a hard look and assessment at. Because we have to be um fair in managing this program as, you know, towards of the tax dollars that we're charged to manage. So those are some of the challenges, but overall you can see the pros column is a lot longer than the challenges column. So, data for the current year. This shows the numbers by school, by grade level. You can see the total um enrollments, two hundred and sixty-four. Of that two hundred and sixty-four, eighty-one are the students of our employees. Um, and just as FYI, like the preschool program is not open to non-residents. Um, LMA, not, you know, programs that are very specialized with limited enrollment are for resident students only. Um, and so unfortunately, like. If, if we ever had room in preschool, it'd be great if we could offer that as a benefit for staff, but we don't have that with our preschool program. And I, I don't know if we would get there or not. It would depend on space and things like that. But city employees are at eighteen and tuition is one sixty-five. So about half the program are employees, most of which of course are schools' employees, but there's a fair number of city employees who take advantage of this. And that's a good help to the city because their folks are often coming in from outside as well. And so that's the, that's how the breakdown is um for, actually I said current, apologies, this is twenty-three, twenty-four. So I don't, I don't really count any numbers as final for the current year until we get on into September. And we are still, to be clear, like at the high school, especially we're holding off on approving. So we have a, a list that's longer than what we're able to fully approve at this time, so. Um, but there are other schools that are still in the evaluation process as well. So here's the history of how the numbers have run from two thousand to twenty-twenty-three. And you'll see that in total, we generally fluctuate between two and three hundred non-resident students across all levels. The breakdown, as I dug into the data, was, is actually pretty consistent. No matter what year I did the snapshot, it wasn't off by more than a percentage point or so. It's usually about forty-two percent, low forties for elementary. Then about nineteen percent are in the Walker Buford schools and then thirty-eight percent, right around there. Very little variation in that breakdown, which I thought was interesting. I thought looking that far back, I might see more variation in how it breaks down across the levels, but pretty consistent. So what we're really here to talk about tonight is tuition rates. Um, the current tuition rate has been unchanged since the pre-pandemic budget action for fiscal year twenty-eighteen. To raise the rate by five percent, which was pretty typical back then before the pandemic. Every couple few years, we'd come to the board and we would raise tuition by about five percent at a time. Because it has been a long time, relatively speaking, since we've touched the tuition rate. Um, what we need to look at is how, where we go from here. The rates are up there for your reference. Um, the way it breaks down is K eight. Um, there's a, you pay one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the first child in the family. And then if you have multiple children that you're enrolling with us, and many families do, there is like a two hundred and forty-three dollar discount. For the second and any subsequent children. And then grades nine through twelve, so this is for the high school. It's one thousand seven hundred and one for the first child, one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars for each additional child at the high school level. Um, what is eye-opening to me, and I really hadn't looked at it this way until the past year or so. These rates are equivalent to less than seven dollars a day for K eight and less than nine dollars a day for um being a student at CHS. So how do we move forward? This is a recommendation for your consideration, no action forced tonight. Um, but this would also deciding now, I think, gives families lots of notice. And I think that's a really good thing with whatever we decide to do. Um, ten percent increase is recommended for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Followed by annual increases of five percent for the subsequent two school years. Um, and the same thing would apply to the um, you know, the second child discount or multiple child discounts. What that gets us to is by the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, we finally get just over the ten dollar a day rate for CHS. Um. The actual year-to-year increase, for example, for the K eight, it's a hundred and thirty-four dollars is the um K, the K through eight increase. For that first ten percent jump. And then the high school goes up a hundred and seventy dollars for that ten percent increase year. After that, the increases are seventy-three dollars and ninety-four dollars, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-eight dollars respectively. So it goes down to less than a hundred dollars a year after that first jump up of ten percent. But with inflation and how long it's been since we touched it, I think this is at least a good place to start the discussion. Sorry, I still haven't touched anything. Um, and the only other thing is looking ahead as we complete the new middle school with reconfiguration. And we move through the elementary rezoning analysis that we need to start embarking on with all the housing developments that are um unfolding. As we get more information regarding particularly the affordable housing developments, which we um contracted with the Weldon Cooper Center at UVA this past year. To update our housing yield rates. And our housing yield rates aren't going up except in affordable housing where the, it's pretty significant um increases in the uh. Yield rate per unit, if you will. So um, you know, I just think we have to take a, a hard look at the tuition program as we move forward, but that's not for now. I think that's just part of a bigger uh thinking process. But um, the tuition rate itself, just wanted to get out ahead of, even ahead of the budget and um make some decisions about that. That's all I have. Are you happy to answer questions?
Michael. Okay. Perhaps the tuition rates can go towards this microphone situation. Um, how are we coming to these numbers? So are we trying to increase? Fund something that there's a shortfall, like is this just kind of an arbitrary increase because of inflation? Do we look at the jurisdictions around us who actually do accept out-of-district students to see how we compare? Like my understanding is Flavana's rate is significantly higher than ours.
We have not looked at um surrounding districts and what they're charging. I, I know this is significantly less, significantly less than any private school.
For sure.
So it's um, I hesitate to call it arbitrary because it's in line with increases of the past. And it's just acknowledging that we stopped doing the five percent increases. And we need to do a, a little bit of catch-up is probably in order and then we need to get back on track. But um, and there is, when you look at it, and I didn't bring this, but if you do the math on those numbers up there, forgive me, I didn't bring it to have it handy. It's not funding anything specific other than trying to offset the cost of service delivery. And of course, when you consider the cost of service delivery, we do have to remember. It's not as much, it's definitely not, it's never been about the tuition that you actually get from the student so much. And it, and in the past, when I looked at the analysis that um Ed Gillespie did in particular. It's not even so much about the per pupil money we get from the state, because even when our LCI was point six and point seven range. We're only getting three, four thousand dollars a student. It's about the LCI itself. And maintaining ADM so that we, we hold that LCI down as much as we can. Because the LCI impacts not just your pure, pure per pupil funding. That LCI factor applies to almost every line in the state funding template. And so um, through a lot of in-depth analysis that was done before I ever got here, that's always been where the, where the game is. But it does seem at a certain point not responsible to, you know, address the rate again.
No, I would be in full support of increasing the non-resident tuition rate. My question is, is this enough? And so I think I would be interested in knowing.
More about.
More about what other jurisdictions are doing. Um, just to see, you know, I don't want to make this untenable for people and then we end up, you know, creating a problem. You know, in relation to the um enrollment numbers. Um.
We can bring that back for the next meeting.
Just before we, it seems like we have a little bit of time before we need to take action while still recognizing that we want to give families enough notice. Um, can you also elaborate on, so there are students who have applied to be non-resident students. Who don't know yet whether they, so, and how does that shake out?
So if they apply after, I believe this year it was after, after June first. So we, we encourage, right, basically if you apply late, there's this point where we're like, you're going to have to wait and see. So if, if we open it up around the same time, we open up the kindergarten registration right after spring break. And then there's a push and people who are planning to come, you know, they, we make decisions on them. If, you know, before the summer starts, but if you're applying during the summer, then it's, it just, we have, they, we have to see how things are shaking out. Before we can give uh decisions. Um, and it is the process, I didn't share this, but the applications go to the school first. If there are any notes on there about special needs or whatever, the principal is, checks with the um coordinator to make sure like, what's the space like in this program? You know, that can be true for Ls or for special services and, or anything like that. And then um, once those things happen, it comes to my office. And this was the first year with the help of Pat's team, we moved away from paper application process. It's part of schoolment now, so that's been a, a nice enhancement, always working, you know, working through some kinks the first time you do it. But it's uh, it's good, it's going to help us with managing the process.
That's all. Doesn't turn off.
I would echo Ms. Julie's sentiment that I think it would be helpful just to see area, localities. And what they're, they're doing. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I agree.
We'll do, we'll bring it back.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, we will now have Ms. Lewis with our HR update.
Good evening, Board Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. Um, I'm here to provide a human resource update in regards to the twenty-four, twenty-five staffing. Thank you. Priority three, um focuses very much on human resources and getting our staff employed. Um, first is start recruitment and retention of properly endorsed teachers. And then we want to engage them in meaningful professional development. And then at the end, find the voice, make sure that they have a voice. Next slide. I'm going to do the numbers right now. So at the beginning of our hiring season, sixty-three openings is what we have. This included ten elementary openings and then an average of. Ten openings at both. I would like to highlight as a note that Greenbrier and Johnson retained their staff. So we were just. So we were just timed for support staff at those two locations. Also want to let you know that six late resignations happened this year. Just to give you a point of reference, the peak time for twenty 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 three, we had seventy three openings. And they were largely instructional assistants and secretary openings. We didn't really have elementary openings. Opening over gifted, part-time reading specialists and instructional assistants. Next slide. So here's the breakdown. When you're looking at the specifics, there are twelve classroom teachers. And then there are seven specialists, which includes at least one part-time specialist, three instructional assistants, and last year we had twenty openings for instructional assistants. Two nurses, which happens to be one part-time nurse, one custodian, a performing arts center manager and a coordinator. So we're looking for twenty seven individuals. So that part-time specialist and part-time nurse equates to one position. There are now three classroom teacher positions open at the elementary school. And this is only a recent transition. We had a recent resignation this week. And we had data from enrollment. So one school has got two openings and another school has one classroom opening. The rest of them are specialists and instructional assistants. Next slide. There are non-classroom teacher openings at Beaufort or the secondary level, Beaufort and the high school. They do include our engineering, computer science, math specialist positions. And then world language. The school has already started to work on securing long-term subs for positions. So I know we have a long-term sub for urban farming at Beaufort Middle, a long-term sub for a science position. And then at the high school, we have a long-term sub for world language. And all of these candidates are working on licensure right now, but they're not properly licensed and endorsed. Want to let you know the retention rates are trending up. So like I said just a couple minutes ago, closer. So seventy three was the number of openings we had last year. And we started out with sixty three, so we are retaining more of our staff. We also went a new way and recruited for teachers through Indeed. Most of the time we only post for leadership positions through Indeed. Those hard to fill positions through Indeed, but went through the process of adding an elementary posting. And we secured seven teachers from that posting. People who are returning to education, who are relocating to Charlottesville or are true career switchers. And then I'll note that we've already hired the two sites, so we appreciate that. So our next steps, we're going to continue to advertise, interview, hire, and place highly qualifying candidates. We've taken on a little more ownership of making sure that they get properly licensed and supported. So we'll do that and pair them up with a mentor and then do some strategic marketing of the openings. I'll take any questions.
Any questions, anybody? All right. Thank you. Appreciate you.
I'll take my glasses off to see. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, those who are assembled. This evening, we are going to bring you an overview of our strategic plan. Since we plan to bring you a comprehensive overview of our year one data in October, we thought this would be a great time to share with you all how we got here. We know that there were some board members who were not a part of this process. So this evening, we thought it would be beneficial to talk about the things we're monitoring, how we're measuring those things. Please remember that throughout the presentation, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop us with those and ask those questions. Just an overview of the presentation, we will talk about our vision and core values, our priority areas, which will include our goals and targets and measurements and strategies. We will end with some next steps, which will include the data dashboard. Included in the work that we did throughout the planning process, we generated a new vision statement, missions, mission statement and core values. And I just want to just highlight our vision, which is Charlottesville City Schools will be a community of hope, growth and learning where all barriers are eliminated, eliminated and possibilities are limitless. And then, of course, you know, our core values are relationships, growth, well-being and the joy of learning. We will, the next four sections of our presentation will cover the increase in academic achievement and creating a culture of safety, wellness and belonging, support our staff and ensuring effective and efficient operations. Each member of our executive leadership team will cover those areas. And then at the end, I will come back with the next steps. We will now have Dr. Odie and she will present the increase in academic achievement.
I don't think I can see through your glasses, Dr. Gurley. And thank you, Dr. Gurley. Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the Board. And Dr. Gurley, our first priority area is to increase academic achievement. On this slide, you see our three goals. They focus on future readiness. And that is ensuring that all of our CCS learners graduate with a clear and actionable plan for their future. This encompasses career planning, higher education preparation and life skills development. Our second goal is, is about rigorous and inclusive learning, providing all of our CCS learners with access to challenging, inclusive and relevant learning experiences. That includes differentiated instruction, equitable resources and engaging curricula that cater to diverse student needs and interests. Our third goal is about academic mastery and equity, focusing on all of our learners demonstrating proficiency in reading and math. The aim is to close achievement and opportunity gaps, ensuring that every student, regardless of background, achieves academic success. Next slide, please. So here we're talking about our targets. And on the screen you see sort of a, a set of themes from our targets. Graduation and post-secondary readiness. This includes ensuring high graduation rates, equipping students with post-secondary plans, meeting college, career and civic readiness index standards. And, and those are shown in targets one, two and eight in our strategic plan. There we have equitable access and achievement. And with that, we're talking about increasing enrollment in K tech, which is in target three. Matching AP and dual enrollment course demographics with overall student demographics, that's in target four. Ensuring mastery and proficiency in tier one instruction, that's in target five. Implementing equitable grading practices from target six and increasing access to rigorous and differentiated instruction from target seven. Then we have academic achievement and proficiency, which includes raising, raising reading proficiency to at least seventy five percent, raising math proficiency to at least seventy percent. And increasing early literacy proficiency to at least seventy five percent. And those are shown in targets nine, ten and twelve. And there's targeted support and improvement, which includes reducing failure rates in math and reading for African-American students and students with disabilities, which is in target eleven. And then finally, on this slide, we have data-driven instruction improvement, which encompasses utilizing various data, data sources to track student progress and outcomes such as Naviance data, SOL pass rates, MAP growth and multi-tiered systems of support data, as Ms. Raznick just shared with you. And those, that is encompassed in several targets, two, five, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, so many targets that really focus on this area. Next slide, please. Here we are going to talk about our measurements. So the measurements for priority one are summarized through these five bullets. Graduation rate and post-secondary readiness, where we're working to maintain our graduation rate at or above state average across all student groups. We want to ensure one hundred percent of graduating students, again, one hundred percent of our graduating students have a post-secondary plan documented through Naviance data and post-secondary enrollment and plans for college, career and military and/or military. And we want to use avid data from our cohorts to support these goals. Then we have career in technical education, CTE enrollment, where we're looking at data to see where we are with increasing the number of CHS students enrolled at K tech by ten percent annually. And we want to measure the percentage of students enrolled at K tech. We also have AP and dual enrollment participation and some of those measures include ensuring that the percentage of students enrolled in AP or dual enrollment courses match the racial and demographic enrollment percentages. Measuring that, you know, we have the target, we're measuring this through data. We're tracking completion rates of these courses disaggregated by student data. You see here instructional quality and equity as a measure. And here we're looking at the implementation of our division literacy plan. You just approved that in the spring and so we're, we're ready to go move full force ahead with implementation. So we'll be monitoring that. We're also ensuring that eighty percent or more of our students demonstrate mastery and proficiency in tier one instruction. That's that first instruction that teachers are providing. And we're using data through multi-tiered systems of supports, MTSS. We will be looking to how we're increasing the percentage of classes using equitable grading practices such as standards-based grading that we're moving towards. And of course, you recall the presentation we shared in the spring about our progression over the years with that. And we're monitoring the number of students receiving Ds and Fs, ensuring standardized report card processes. And our last theme in measurements is rigor and academic achievement. And here we're looking at increasing students' access to rigor and critical and creative thinking through various metrics. Evaluating student responses related to rigor on the state climate surveys, tracking students identified and served in our gifted program, measuring the percentage of unleveled courses and those, those using collaborative models for students receiving special education services and providing professional learning resources for differentiation. That is ongoing. Next slide, please. The final area for priority one is a focus on strategies. We have fourteen of them. The top themes in the strategies include those there on the screen, equity and rigor in academic planning, where we're enhancing academic advising with a focus on equity, that's in strategy one. Using unlevelled courses to create scaffolded rigor, that's in strategy four. Implementing an equitable master schedule, strategy five. We also have personalized education and career planning that surfaced as a theme in our strategies where we're doing things like creating personalized college and career plans for every student, that's in strategy two. Expanding opportunities for middle school students in CTE and advanced courses, strategy three. And there's aligned and differentiated curriculum there, which encompasses providing a coherent and rigorous pre-K through twelve literacy English Language Arts Program. That is in strategy seven. And providing a coherent and rigorous pre-K through twelve math program, strategy eight. And then we have support for special populations, which includes ensuring individualized instruction and supports for students with disabilities, strategy nine, increasing supports for English learners, strategy ten. And finally, professional development and transition support, which involves training teachers in best practices for early childhood and literacy instruction, strategy twelve. Creating smooth transitions for students and programs during organizational changes. And that is seen in strategy thirteen and fourteen. So that gives you an overview of priority one, which is increased academic achievement. Unless you have questions, I'll turn it over to Rachel Raznick, I think, who will be presenting priority two.
Dr. Odie, I have a question, probably not just for you, but for the rest of the team and Dr. Gurley potentially. And I know, when are we seeing our dashboard? When, I know, I don't want to like steal your thunder.
It's in presentation. We're going to do a soft rollout at the end of September, the week of like the twenty third-ish. And then, so it will go live then, and then we will also integrate it into the presentation that Ms. Swift is doing in October when we go over our accreditation data. And that'll also be our year one data.
Great. Awesome. I'm excited. So when, when looking at our strategic plan and the, and the finalized draft and we're looking at the strategies. So when you look at strategy one and strategy two for the year twenty three, twenty four, and some of these other ones as well. So they're designated, whether they're still in the planning stage, whether they're ready to be implemented or whether we're going to revise them. So strategy one, two, five, six, twelve and thirteen, all indicated last year that they were in the planning stage. So at what point, and I don't know if this is in the dashboard, that these actually then turn? Or in what way are you and the team evaluating whether those, whether the planning is done and those are ready to be implemented or whether they get to turn to blue? I mean, is this something that, that we will be updated on or how are you looking at those things?
Certainly, I, I can start the answer to that. I constantly have conversations with the instructional coordinators. They're monitoring strategies, targets that are in their house. And so they're collecting data and are readily sharing those information, those pieces of data with me. So what you will see when we present the data dashboard is that some of these, we're, we're rolling right along with, as you said, some of them are planning, some of them were implementation. And so we're, you will find that we're, we're right on target with many of our strategies that you have in the strategic plan.
So that, yeah, thank you. So I guess, so many of those for last year's academic year were, were designated as planning. And I just want to make sure that now they should be And I just want to make sure that now they should be.
In implementation.
Yeah, and if not, what can we do, or what are you all doing to kind of help boost those along? Or what barriers, I guess, you're, you and the team are bumping up against? I mean, I'd be curious to hear that, if it's something that's significant and we need to revisit that.
Our strategic plan drives our work. It drives our work. So if it was, it is our goal that if it was a planning year, that's what we utilize it as, and we're moving into implementation in year two. Uh, right now, I, I truly can't say that there's a strategy that we need to revise to planning in year two. I think we're ready, we're ready to continue with implementation. We did the work last year. We had constant conversations about the strategic plan and, and where our work fit into it and what progress we were making with that specific strategy or target. So I anticipate uh that we will be able to uh confidently share where we are. You'll see it in the dashboard and, and we'll have good reports.
Right. And I will say that, you know, they are much closer to the work, and so they can speak more personally to it. But being someone who's a couple of layers back, um, just as, you know, I'm on, on page eight, um, where we're looking at the strategies that have the Ps. And so with academic advising, um, we know that we've already, um, that's, I'm Naviance. Uh, we're providing, um, we're providing training. So a lot of this is, a lot of the strategies are weeds work, um, that help us to get to the work, um, to get to those, um, to those goals, um, and those, those targets back. So I mean, a lot of it is for us. So those are the strategies that help us get to those, um, those targets. And so, for example, we've doing Naviance. When we talk about, when we look at number two, um, you know, I've had meetings, and we were having meetings with PBCC about what early college programs looks like, um, what is using, um, the fast-forward funds look like for CTE. Um, all, I mean, all these things, equitable grading. We had someone come out and do a training with us, um, at our leadership advance on Tuesday. Someone worked with our, um, the same person worked with our instructional coaches. So all of this work is happening. This is our, this is really our part. If you didn't see this, you probably wouldn't know how we're getting to it. But this is like the hour work. And then, and I don't know if there's a, I mean, without creating another layer, I don't know how to, this is just the work. Um, it's the work. And so when you don't see the targets arrive, then it's like, well, I thought all of these things were to help you to get to how you arrive at target one through twelve.
I appreciate that, and I definitely don't want to jump in. So, but I think that, that explanation helps everybody to hear that.
Yeah, this is, that's the, but the strategies are the behind-the-scenes work that we're saying, hey, if you're wondering how we got to, uh, we arrived at the target and reached the measure, these are, this is how we're doing it. Um, yeah. And I can say that I have a, I'm further, a little further back from the work, and I can speak personally to it. So I know, like, our instructional coordinators and our directors and chiefs, they, they have it better than I do.
And, and I will venture to some of, our work overlaps. So you heard me mention MTSS, that really falls under Ms. Raznick. But our, our work is constantly overlapping. So I know that she's working with counselors on some of the things that I spoke about today. So we feel really good about um our process and, and the progress that we're making. I'm sorry, I don't have the strategic plan in front of me to look at the Ps and I.
No, 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 that's, no, and I, I appreciate that. And I think for the board members who weren't, who kind of came on um after the fact, and I know Ms. Cooper was part of and on some of the committee, um, and I don't know how she felt. And I mean, I had been on the board, and I mean, I knew this was, this part of it was like, whoo, wait. I mean, I sat back and I let the experts do the work and appreciated that. But to see this and to know that there were years that were designated for planning, I just want to make sure, you know, as we, the board, approve this strategic plan, that, that we are moving that way. So I minimally, I mean, I just wanted to hear, we're there, you know, so I appreciate that. So thank you.
And in some respects, we're ahead. We're, we're even ahead in some areas.
And if I could, I think even as a board, as we are learning, especially the new four, um, as questions come up and as issues arise for us to look back at the strategic plan and see, does that, where does that question align with the strategic plan? Where does that fall? And how are we measuring that work before just running and jumping to needing to know, wanting to know, responding to an inquiry? Does this align with the strategic plan? And if it doesn't, we got some other work to do first. Thanks so much. But we, we, we have a plan, and clearly, Dr. Gurley and his staff are working towards the work in that plan.
Um, no, I was just going to say, I think that a lot of, if you have questions, a lot of the questions probably be, will be able to be answered through the dashboard, once you kind of see it there, so.
All right, Ms. Raznick.
Hi, good evening. Um, so I'm going to cover our priority two, so providing a culture of safety, wellness, and belonging that incorporates a lot of different um staff and target strategies and goals. Um, so when we're thinking about our specific targets um for our culture of safety, wellness, and belonging, we're thinking about our student support and well-being, which incorporates the implementation of our tiered supports across academic and non-academic domains. And that's explicit instruction in social-emotional skills and a focus on school climate. Health and nutrition emphasizes students accessing healthy, locally-sourced meals and increasing the number of students that meet the governor's scorecard on nutrition and physical activity. Family and community engagement combines maintaining strong community partnerships while increasing parent, student, and family engagement in school activities and um being present in the school daily. Um, our attendance targets are geared towards reducing chronic absenteeism and keeping students engaged academically. Um, and then safety and security encompasses the completion of our designated safety projects across all of our campuses. So what you'll see when you um get to see the data dashboard, um, there's going to be multiple different types of measures in this domain. Um, some that are going to focus on our implementation of specific strategies, and others that focus on how effective um those implementations were. So implementation measures will consider things like, did we finish a safety project? Um, how many students are eligible for um free student meals using the community eligibility provision? Um, our tiered fidelity inventory, which um schools do annually to assess whether or not they're using evidence-based practices to create a positive school culture. Um, but then you'll also see whether these um implementations are working for students. Um, and in that, you'll see um student or meal participation rates. Um, information gathered through school climate and culture surveys, um, cut aggregate data on threat assessments, chronic absenteeism rates. Also information about office discipline referral rates and universal screening data. We would hope that that data reflects our increased implementation of different um targets and goals. So specifically, um, regarding our strategies, our strategies to provide a culture of safety, wellness, and belonging, including, include implementing culturally responsive teaching practices, providing high-quality social-emotional learning opportunities for all of our students pre-K through twelve. Um, that explicit social-emotional instruction allows our students to acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage their emotions, and feel and show empathy for others. We ensure that staff and students have access to the mental health supports necessary by providing all of our schools with trained mental health professionals and partnering with community organizations for um referrals and prevention. Um, and we provide mental health care coordination through CareSolus for both students and staff. Our schools encourage teachers to expand their learning to the outdoors. Examples of outdoor learning spaces can be seen across our schools, like the courtyard at Greenbrier, uh, the racetrack around Jackson Bia, and in the gardens at all of our schools. Our schools and family in, community engagement teams incorporate feedback from families to increase awareness of opportunities within the schools, um, and ha, enhance our different partnerships with community organizations. Um, and um, our implementation plans for our engagement teams include ways that those teams can assess the effectiveness of the programming, who they're reaching, um, and how they're reaching those families. Um, and then lastly, in order to create that healthy and safe environment at school, our nutrition department um is taking action steps to promote and serve healthy meals.
Sorry if I don't know. Meal and nutrition services, are those free this year again? Do we know? At all schools?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Lewis.
Good evening again, Madam Chair. I'll move over here. I'll try, oh, really try.
Use your teacher voice.
Members of the board and Dr. Gurley. Um, priority three focuses on supporting our staff. And the focus starts with recruitment and retention of licensed and properly-endored staff. And we also aim to engage staff in meaningful, relevant, timely, and personalized professional learning. We're going to recruit and retain teachers of color and value staff boys. When looking at our targets, there are five main areas. First, staffing. We want to be fully staffed at the beginning of the school year. We work closely with school administrators to recognize the shifts early and explore new recruiting opportunities. We also strive to annually hire additional licensed and professional staff that match the diversity of our students. And we're supporting um new staff or unlicensed staff in getting licensure. And one of those pathways is IAs to teachers. Um, number two is professional development. We, one of the ways to retain staff is to make sure that you provide them effective classroom professional development, just-in-time targeted professional development for all staff. These professional development opportunities also include an opportunity for licensed staff to pursue leadership opportunities. And we want to embed culturally responsive content and equity-focused teaching practices when we're doing this. The workplace environment is understanding the importance of the culture within the school. That is critical. We're going to, we desire to make improvements on school culture. We will survey our staff and integrate their input into the decision-making. We will work closely with our staff regarding attendance rates, providing guidance to staff for creating a division-wide created um handbook so that they have the guidance and tools and resources that they need. Diversity in conclusion would be the last one. We recognize the importance of having a diverse staff that mirrors our student population. So uh it's just something we're going to have to continue to work. All right, next. The metric is, metrics we're going to use to measure our support to staff. We're going to measure the number of vacancies at the start of the school year. And then we'll measure the number of people who are properly licensed and endorsed. Second, as far as retention, annual retention rates. And I'll provide a written report of that information. And it'll be disaggregated by demographics so that you can see clearly. And it'll also include years of experience. Next, hiring licensed staff of color. I'll provide that update to you as well. But we're going to measure and hopefully um continue to recruit and retain persons of color. Opportunities for leadership. We have an active cohort right now that is working on getting their administrative endorsement. And we'll give you statistics about how they're performing, who graduates, their transition into leadership, providing them opportunities. And pathways for unlicensed individuals to become licensed. We have a number of staff who are either career switchers, IAs, that are transitioning into educational programs. And we'll give you data and statistics on that. Next slide. Oh, you went one more, I think. Should we go back one? Hmm, okay. Here are some of the strategies. There's, I keep reiterating the importance of recruitment. But we're going to have a recruitment plan, collect and analyze the data trends, realize where we're getting applicants from, and then continue to go to those communities to solicit and secure new teachers. Professional development, we constantly get surveys and feedback from people as they go through the professional learning. They'll give us feedback on what their needs are and how effective our practices are. We're going to have collaboration and co-teaching. We're going to establish some co-teaching opportunities, increase the interrelater reliability of the evaluation process, and then work with administrators for alternative licensure pathways. Um, we'll continue to recruit for a diverse staff and try to increase the culture and climate effectively in our schools. I'll take any questions.
Nope.
I think we're good. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Kim Powell.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. Last but not least, goal area four, ensuring effective and efficient operations. Um, the goals in this area are focused on modernizing our facilities to meet our students and staff needs and um serving them all as best we can. Um, advancing different operational efficiencies and upgrades, uh promoting sustainability and environmental awareness, and demonstrating fiscal stewardship in all we do. So, targets in this area, and there's a lot of them, so we'll get my notes here. When it comes to infrastructure and modernization, our targets are things like, um, it's been mentioned before, completion of projects. We've got a lot of big modernization work. And another thing, things that are maybe less visible are things like aligning all of K-Tech's technology and maintenance systems and security systems and IT systems with our standards. Um, upgrading scene, and this is like really behind the scenes, but it's, it's super important. Things like upgrading and replacing all the cabling in our building to make sure that it's CAT six A or greater. That's one of the targets in Mr. Como's area. Um, so all of these things are really about updating and improving physical and techno, technology infrastructure. And some of it's very visible to you, and some of it's not, but still very important. Um, the sustainability and environmental responsibility targets, those are all um embedded within the city's larger dashboard. And so they are um supposed to have their dashboard up and running around September, October, at the same time we're going to be la, launching ours. So it should be connected, and you should be able to see how we're tracking via their dashboard. That's the plan. And that has to do with things like energy star scores and um energy use intensity scores and water use intensity scores. And so that's where you'll find that information, and that, that's where the targets are, is it's embedded in the city's dashboard. Remember, we are most of their physical facilities. Most of the physical facilities of the city are in schools. Um, another big area where we have targets is uh transportation efficiency and accessibility. Um, this uh target includes, you know, things like eliminating the waitlist for bus transportation and increasing the um efficacy of bike and pedestrian commute options. Um, and I'm very excited to report that as of today's trip meeting, no waitlists. So uh we're super happy about that. It's been a.
Ms. Powell, can you say that again, please?
No waitlists.
Louder.
No waitlists. It's been a long time coming and a big lift by a lot of people. Pat's team's been instrumental in that work. We've done a lot to improve our routing efficacy, our ability to quick turn demand as, you know, right now if a student is not routed, it's either because they haven't completed registration and we, they're new to us and we have no visibility of them. Or if they're a returning student, they got routed based on the information we had from last year. So if that information changed. But we have some real great talent in the routing office now at City Transportation. And it's a lot of work that's been done by a lot of, a lot of good people to get us where we are now. So yeah, that's a good thing. Okay, so back to the targets. In the area of operational effectiveness, again, that's really an overarching theme with all these areas, transportation, facilities. But Mr. Cuomo and his team again have some specific targets in this goal area such as ensuring that all of our school campuses and offices are connected on the private fiber network. So again, one of those things you don't necessarily see. You may have seen some of the disruption and the digging around town. That's a huge project and it's going to be such a great foundation for our future. And then also just making sure we are consistently decreasing the age of the network equipment that we have by fifty percent. Again, that's the type of thing nobody notices until it fails. And so these are really important targets. And last but certainly not least, under the umbrella of fiscal accountability and strategic budgeting, ensuring that all of our budget allocations support the strategic plan priorities. That was mentioned earlier in some of your comments. That's target nine. And then achieving recognition for the work we do, the work that Renee Hoover and her team does with things like the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award, which under her leadership, she's gotten it at least two years in a row now. And she really started that process. So, okay, next slide. So measurements with these targets. Thanks, Lizzy. So as Ms. Raznick mentioned earlier, I thought, I took this from her idea. I really like thinking about measurements, particularly in this area, in terms of there's implementation measurements and progress towards implementation. And then there's the effectiveness measures. So if some examples of measurements you'll see when the dashboard comes out in this goal area are things like where we are percentage-wise in completing annual facility modernization projects, where we are in that process of converting all the K-Tech systems to be in alignment with our standards and our systems, and where we are in the progress of, you know, making all those private fiber network connections. And so you'll see like percentage, where we are in relation to our goals of a hundred percent in all these areas. And then for effectiveness, you would see things like what, how much, how much of a waitlist do we have? Again, right now we're sitting in a good spot. Where are we with the age of our network equipment? How are we tracking with getting the meritorious budget awards? Things like that is, that's the type of things you will see in these, in the metrics for this area. Lizzy, next slide. Thanks. So strategies, you know, the work we are executing on to hit these targets and to meet these goals are things like all the project management and coordination around modernization projects. You know, the big, you know, banner project for that right now, of course, is the middle school. But things like our, you know, improved bathrooms here at the high school and how we can continue making progress with things like that. Those are all exciting projects and very visible. Preschool, the early childhood center that, you know, we're going to get the preschoolers all together at the Walker Campus, and that's a project in and of itself. But then we don't want to, we don't stop there. We, we hope, you know, achieve the vision of that modernized preschool center, a center that's really made for our youngest learners. Sustainable and secure facilities, there's lots of activity there. I mentioned the CHS restroom projects. But when you talk about sustainability, it's things like tracking our progress with getting solar on the rooftops and things like integrating K-Tech into, fully into all of our systems so that it's, you know, it's all standardized and something that we are well-prepared to maintain and sustain. Transportation and accessibility, there's a, we still meet weekly as a, as a team, IT team. Some Beth Chuck with comms joins us a lot, myself and Julia Green and our colleagues in transportation. And we're always talking about how to improve the data flow and how to make routing as efficient as it can be and as effective as it can be to serve our students. And there's more work that can be done there. And we're still talking with the city about what organization makes sense as far as routing and where that work should be done in the system called Versatrans and how we can improve that to get more functionality out of it for our parents and for, you know, so you could get real-time information about where your student is with the bus, that type of thing. There are functions and features we want to push to see brought forward. And so those are exciting things and we're always looking to improve. And then when it comes to financial transparency and strategic planning, again, just always trying to be transparent in our communications about finance, making sure we align spending with our strategic plan. And things like, and you know, hire, you know, work partnering with a consultant to look at how we're zoned as far as our elementary schools because that's part of being fiscally responsible is making sure we don't have some big bubble in one of the elementary zones. And then we're looking at having to invest in modular units. If we can avoid that, we would certainly like to. So that's part of being transparent, engaging in those types of public discussions and trying to be proactive, to be as fiscally responsible as we can be. So next slide, I think belongs to Dr. Gurley.
Were there any Ms. Powell questions before we wrap it up? Okay, so as you all have heard, I know you've asked a lot of questions, very good questions. There's a lot of work that went into this document. There are, this is a living document. It does not rest on a shelf. We use this to continue to innovate our programming. We think that our strategic plan is the guiding light that helps our students and staff attain their goals. As an immediate next step in this process, we will be rolling out the data dashboard. Ms. Swift and Dr. Johnson have been working collaboratively with the technology department to ensure that there's a, there's seamless migration of data from the technology, with our technology platform. We thank them. A lot of people's hands are going into this project, specifically with the data dashboard. We thought that it would look one way when we finished with the vendor who was working with us and it just did not meet our expectations. And we know that we want this data dashboard to be comprehensive. So as we roll out, as we do the rollout, it'll happen. It will happen in late September around, I think, the week of the twenty-third. When Ms. Swift presents in October, there will be an accreditation update. But we will also do some year one, looking at year one metrics and how we did. And I know that was part of the, some of the questions, one of the questions about when we, how do we know when we're in year one, when we're in the planning, when we're in implementation? And so what we're going to do is we're going to quantify, what does year, what did year one look like? And so we will take some of those measures and we will begin to roll that out. And then, so that'll be a part of what happens in October. And that's it, unless you have any further questions. I mean, I just want to, I know we did not hear from Ms. Hoover, but you heard her, where her work lies in this document, where Ms. Chuck's work lies in this document. I mean, everyone lives in this document. And when we get to 2028, we will be better. We will be better.
Any questions, anybody? I just want to say, Dr. Gurley, thank you for kind of taking this on. It was kind of a later ask as far as adding this to the agenda. So thank you and your team for pulling it together. But I think it worked well as far as what you're going to launch, as far as, you know, kind of prepping us and, and the public for that matter, as far as what our priorities are for Charlottesville City Schools and then what we'll be looking at as far as the data in the next month or two with your presentations. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
So the next item on the agenda was board response to written reports. And then we will move to twelve point zero, which is comments from members of the community. This is the second opportunity for anybody here, either in the media center or online. Again, a big shout out to Ms. Mason, who is always following along. So we appreciate you. But if there's anybody who would like to come up, now is your time. All right, I see no takers. So thank you for that. And for anybody who's tuned in or anybody who sat through the meeting. And then we will move to comments from the board. So I did want to, oh gosh. I'll save it for later. We'll start with you, if you don't mind. Are you ready, Ms. Burns?
All right, I wanted to draw the attention of the board to a recent public notice published in the Daily Progress on July the twenty-seventh, 2024. The notice announces a public hearing scheduled for August fifth of 2024, during which time the Charlottesville City Council will consider an ordinance to increase the salaries of its members. In July 2024, the Virginia General Assembly amended the Code five point two dash one four one four point six to allow localities to adjust the compensation for city council members. Specifically, the city of Charlottesville has been authorized to raise the salaries of city councilors from eighteen thousand dollars annually to thirty-four thousand dollars annually, and the mayor's salary from twenty thousand dollars annually to thirty-seven thousand dollars annually. It is important to note that the proposed increase would not be effective until July one, 2026, following the next general election for city council. And so I wanted to take the opportunity, given that development, to remind our board that any potential adjustments to our own school board member compensation would need to be voted on by December thirty-first of 2024 to align with the next election cycle in November of 2025. This would ensure that any changes would be effective starting January one, 2026. And that is in accordance with the Code of Virginia twenty-two point one dash thirty-two, salary of members. And the last salary increase for the board was done December fourth of 2014, which became effective January one of 2016. So I just wanted to bring this to the attention of my colleagues. And I will provide you with some follow-up data for the Virginia School Board Association outlining the localities throughout the state and what current compensation is throughout the state and then in District Five, of which we are a member of. And just want to bring that to the attention and hope that we can have some continued discussion on the matter. Also, if I, sorry. Wanted to bring the attention to a few community events happening. West Haven Community Day, happening on Hardy Drive, that's Saturday, August third. So this Saturday from ten to four, and that's a great community event that I know many of us attend and enjoy being engaged in the community. And then there is the Back to School Bash on the Ting Pavilion. That's sponsored by the African-American Pastors Council. That is Saturday, August tenth, and that is from ten until twelve PM. And then the Better Together Back to School Bash at the Cherry Avenue Boys and Girls Club. That is Sunday, August the eleventh, from ten to two PM. Thank you.
I just want to publicly thank Dr. Gurley and the Charlottesville City School staff for presenting the strategic plan and kind of letting us know all of the things that's been happening. I think it was a lot of people that put a lot of work into the strategic plan. And to see that the work is being implemented, I really appreciate that. And I can't wait to see the dashboard to kind of see where we started and how far we've come. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello? Okay, I wanted to say, welcome back, everybody. As far as for the E-Hall, I would like, E-Hall passes, I would like to see a visual at the next meeting, if it's possible, like a demo. That would be really great. Then also for the Google Chat email communication for parents and students, I was hoping we can get some awareness on Parent Square just to like remind parents that this is an option. We do have options besides calling the front office to get in contact with our children. And then I want to thank the division team for working hard. Sounds like they have a real strong plan to collect data and like to reflect on what's, what's working. So I really appreciate that overall. Thank you, guys.
And I will, I'll attach a demo video for you for, for E-Hall pass of my brief tomorrow.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to say again, thank you to everybody. I want to welcome, I believe, the new hires. Teachers started today. Welcome the students back soon. Just to update everybody quickly, Mr. Meyer, Dr. Gurley, Ms. Powell, and I did meet kind of a, an earlier meeting with some of the city staff. We met with Mayor Wade, City Manager Sanders, Mike Goddard, Crystal Rennable. Is that it? I believe. And to talk just a little bit about sustainability and some of the CIP work with the schools and just trying to, to initiate an earlier conversation with that. So I wanted to just let you know that we did have that and also to extend some gratitude to, to staff at the city level for making time to meet with us. Also was able to, and Mr. Myers is not here, but he and I both attended or were able to stop by and, and celebrate our summer graduates. So we had three graduates here at Charlottesville High School. So that was fun to be able to be there for that. And I also, I'm going to try and make an effort. And if I forget, I'm holding somebody else here to help remind me or to do it. But I do want to make sure that the public is aware, you know, that we are renaming or have renamed two of our elementary schools and both of those are polling places. So I know the city has something on their website, but just to remind community members that Clark will be renamed or is renamed Summit and Venable is renamed Trailblazer. So I think every opportunity that we can all get or that we all have to remind people as there is an election coming up in November. So I think it's important that we do our part to remind people. And I think that is it. So thank you so much. That's it for that. And now it's your turn.
All right, I'm really quick. Today was great to welcome so many excited teachers today. I remember the look that they had on their faces today. So it was always, always nice to welcome our new teachers back. We welcome all of our teachers back on Monday. Very excited about welcoming them back and, and just getting out to visit with them in, in those spaces. We have our PL Palooza next week. And so I think we've invited our board members to join us during our, during our opening. And there will be a lot of just learning sessions for our, for different groups, our teachers, support staff. So the Palooza is just going to be just a great day for us. And then lastly, just really excited about a fantastic school year. It will be one that we will, we will celebrate from the beginning all the way to the end. The feels already are different, and the only way to go is up. All right.
Thank you, sir. Any work session wrap-up? I think we're good. Okay. As far as upcoming meetings, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is September fifth. And that'll be right here in the media center at five o'clock. And unless there's any other last-minute comments, I call this meeting adjourned. So thank you.